Twenty-two is the last day to register to vote for the annual town election on Monday, April 11th, 2022. The town's clerk's office will be open until 8:00 PM on March 22nd. And I just wanted to give a congratulations to the Donegan family. Ian's not here tonight because he had birth to his baby daughter. So congratulations to them.
Okay, Mary.
Such a happy announcement.
It is.
Yeah. I just want to express what everybody is right now, that my prayers and thoughts are with the people of Ukraine and the Russian people who are non-military, who have to live under that kind of regime. Very happy and honored and blessed to be American. We're all standing in solidarity. We have more yellow ones, but they wanted to have yellow ones.
I got blue.
Oh, you get the blue. Okay.
They don't normally wear yellow. Okay, Jamie?
No, I just echo the sentiments already stated.
Okay. Could we please have a moment of silence for the people affected by COVID and the people in Ukraine and also the innocent Russian people? Okay, thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, we have Department Reports, Fire Department, Chief Grosso.
Evening.
Good evening.
You have my monthly reports for both January and February. I'm happy to answer questions. I'd like to highlight a couple of items. We are noticing a slight uptake in the number of fires that we're being called to respond to. Most recently, the calls have been for cooking fires on stoves. So I'd like to remind the public to just be mindful of careful cooking techniques. Should you have a stove fire, especially if it involves grease, do not put water on it. That will only serve to spread the fire and make it worse. And if there are any questions, we're here every day to answer those for the public if they need our support. On January 21st, the Fire Department was called to the town of Charlton to assist with a residential structure fire. I have a letter from Chief Knopf from the Charlton Fire Department thanking us for our assistance there. Didn't make it into your packet because I received it late, but I did want to make mention of that. For February, I would like to make note of the training. The department went through their annual ice rescue training, which is always kind of a fun experience. We did it over in Long Pond. And it's a pretty exciting experience to see the firefighters suit up and go in the ice cold frigid water and the techniques that they use to rescue themselves and each other. So the department was very successful in that entire training evolution. The other thing I want to make note of, we received, the department and the town received two grants from the Commonwealth, one for $4,575 for student awareness of fire education and the other for $2,855 for senior awareness of fire education. And our safe and senior safe coordinator, Steve Joyce, will put that, those funds to good use for the education of the children and for assisting with the seniors.
Okay, Chief, how many years have we been getting those? Quite a few?
It's been, it's been a number of years. Certainly, the five years that I have been here, we've received a decent size award. So they're very helpful.
Thank you.
And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, does the board have any questions or comments?
Can you feel that cold water at all when they're appropriately suited?
Yeah, unfortunately, the suits are not dry suits and they do allow water in at various locations, the zippers around the neck. And of course, we try to keep up with them, but every once in a while, we miss a pinhole and the individual wearing the suit finds it for us.
When you said it, when you said it was fun, I'm thinking, I don't know.
Yeah.
Okay, we do have a letter here from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Office of Public Safety and Security Massachusetts Firefighting Academy. This hereby certifies that John Grosso Jr. has successfully completed the course of studies in the 2022 Chief Fire Office Program conducted by the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security Department of Fire Services and Edward J. Collins Jr. Center for Public Management at the University of Massachusetts, Boston. So congratulations from the board.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I was just curious how the two hires are coming, the deputy chief and the fire inspector.
Very well. The deputy chief's assessment center is Wednesday. And after that, there will be three candidates that will become finalists. And I will be meeting with the interim TA to interview those individuals. They will also have a chance to meet with the firefighters. And hopefully, the first Monday in April will be a night of appointment for both of those positions you just asked about.
Okay, were there many applicants?
Seven. I'm sorry, there were 12 applicants. Out of those 12, two were from Florida, two from Connecticut, and eight from Massachusetts. So a very, very good list of qualified candidates.
Okay, thank you. Anything else from the board? Do you have anything else, Chief?
Not regarding my reports.
Thank you then.
I do have an appointment to make.
Yes, but...
Okay. Is that not, not next?
No, it's on the agenda, but I was just letting you get through your report if you had anything to add to the report.
Thank you very much.
This is a little separate. Okay. Okay. Next, we have several action items, which are all consideration and possible action. First one is the promotion of Jennifer Ash to rank a fire lieutenant with the Sturbridge Fire Department. Jennifer? Good evening.
Good evening.
So I'll start off with a little background on Jen. She was appointed full-time to the department on February 27th, 2017. She's been an asset to our department since day one. She's been a paramedic since 2007 and has worked as a paramedic supervisor in a private position capacity. She's certified to the level of Fire Officer One and Fire Instructor One, in addition to many other fire certifications. She holds an associate's degree and is currently working toward the completion of her bachelor's degree in fire science. Jen, along with the other candidates for this position, were put through an assessment center process, a written exam, and then their training file, their personnel file, and their seniority were used to come up with an overall score. All of the candidates did very, very well, and Jen was the top scorer in that process. So I'm very proud and pleased to bring you, bring her forward to you tonight for promotion to the rank of lieutenant.
Any questions, comments from the board?
Congratulations.
Yeah, congratulations.
Is someone willing to make a motion then?
I will make a motion to promote firefighter Ash to the rank of lieutenant effective March 8th, 2022, at the pay rate of 3221 per hour, in accordance with the relevant CVA with Teamsters local at 170.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Discussion. All in favor? Okay, congratulations.
You going to take any pictures? Do you want a picture taken? No, you're good.
Thanks.
That's one of the highlights.
Okay, we'll give you a chance to clear.
Oh, yeah.
This taller. It's like if I get on your shoulders. Okay, to continue the list of other action items, we'll be talking about accepting a donation for the Sturbridge Recreational Department, appointment of Leon Goman III as a full-time dispatcher with the Sturbridge Police Department, accept a donation to the Sturbridge Police Department in the amount of $250. Change, oh, the change of manager for Ocean State Job Lot, we will put off till later at their request. Action on a Hocker peddler license for Brent Pearl. Action on the appointment of Susan Waters as the planning board designee to the Betterment Committee. Action on transient vendor license for David Brockman at the Sturbridge Hotel. Consideration, Senior Center Building Committee Confirmation, DPW Search Committee Confirmation, reappointment for Cheryl Woodcreeden to the Board of Registars, appointment of Gil Joseph Provo as the part-time plumbing and gas inspector. Consideration and possible action on the appointment of John Murray as the backup part-time plumbing and gas inspector. Then we will have old business, new business, correspondence, and approval minutes, and then Citizens Forum. Okay, Annie? This is for consideration of the donations to the rec department for the Turner baseball field renovations. $3,000 from Sturbridge Laid Back Competitive Baseball League, $173 from the Sturbridge Little League.
Yep, good evening. So this project has been going on for some time. We've been updating each of our existing fields. So a good portion of the project is funded through Betterment, but the Laid Back Competitive League came forward with what they were able to donate from their proceeds over the years. So the Laid Back Competitive League, for those who don't know, is our adult league here in town. They have grown substantially over the years. They do a phenomenal job, and they use the field for a minimum of 12 games per season. They fit in more with the practices when they can, but seeing as they're adult fields, it is quite damaging. So they've been very good sports over the years with hoping to maintain, and this is the next step to bring Turners up to date.
Okay, any questions, Annie? Annie, do you want to just mention the amount from the Betterment Committee we voted at town meeting for?
So the Betterment Committee allocated $6,819.
Okay, thank you.
How long have they had the Laid Back League?
I can get you the definite, but it's been, it's been there for quite some time.
I just, oh, nice. Like 10 years, five years?
Over, I think they're, if they haven't exceeded 10, they're over 10, because they were pretty well developed before I came into the position.
And it's baseball, not softball?
Baseball, yep. It's men's baseball.
Not that I'm joining.
They're pretty competitive, yes.
Switched to softball, but I was just curious if it was still baseball, but it is.
I've been trying to get interest for softball, so I'll let you know.
Oh, no, no.
I can be the water girl.
Yeah.
It's not my strength.
Jamie, you laughed too heartily. Okay, anything else, Annie?
Nope, we would, the rec committee asked for your support in accepting the donations. The president of the Laid Back Competitive League is Eric Prue, and then the president of the Sturbridge Little League is Brian Sommers.
Okay, somebody want to make a motion then to accept the donations?
Make a motion to accept the donations of $3,000 and $173 with thanks.
Is there a second?
I will second that motion.
Discussion. All in favor? Okay, thank you, Annie.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, the appointment of Leon Goman III as a full-time dispatcher. Good evening, Lieutenant.
Good evening, board members. Thanks for including us on the agenda tonight. I was very nervous. This is my first time in front of you, so...
Oh, we'll be kind.
They all left. That was wonderful. So, Mr. Reed, thank you for...
Getting rid of them?
Getting rid of them.
Don't worry, I've got 20 questions here.
Well, I do want to start off by saying that Chief Desert sends his regrets for not being here tonight. He's on vacation and cannot be here, but he asked me to sit in to do this, present this appointment to you, because we know how important it is to fulfill these positions and not leave these positions vacant. So I do appreciate you fitting us in into this meeting tonight. So having that said, it gives me great pleasure to introduce Mr. Leon Goman III. As you know, Mr. Limon Goman II. Mr. Leon Goman III is a town resident here in Sturbridge, and he's on the verge of exploring a career in public safety, which I am so excited about, hoping to teach and mentor Mr. Goman III. He did very well in his interview process, and he has been selected as our top candidate. He's ready for new challenges, and I think he is going to be a wonderful full-time dispatcher for the town of Sturbridge. We're asking the board members tonight on behalf of Chief Desert and the Sturbridge Police Department, and I'm asking the board members to support his appointment at the rate of 2169, full-time dispatcher for the town of Sturbridge, Sturbridge Police Department.
Okay, any questions from the board? Someone willing to make a motion?
Sure, I will move that we appoint Mr. Leon Goman III as a full-time dispatcher effective March 8th, 2022, with an hourly rate of 2169 and benefits of a newly hired dispatcher.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Discussion. All in favor? Okay, congratulations.
Congratulations.
We are going to do a picture. If you don't mind.
No. Congratulations.
You mind?
Congratulations.
Sorry, it's confusing.
Okay, and a shout out to Leon Goman II.
We do have another additional job opening if you're interested. We're not letting Bob go either.
I'm sorry, I shut my phone off.
It was going well till here, Joe.
Oh, sure. Oh, sure.
I'm sure you can. You're the important one. All right, here we go.
Okay, you ought to get one with father and son.
No, not with us, but the two of you, sure.
Yeah.
Do you want one with the three of you?
Yes.
Take a picture for the three?
Can you take it, Michelle?
I like pictures.
Wait, are we using this one too?
I don't think so. I think it's...
No, it's just, just the three of them.
No, no.
No, no. Just the important people.
Probably just took a video.
You too. Good to see you, Leon. Boss, I know. I love that. You got to teach Bob. Leon.
What, the boss?
Hey, Leon, you got to teach Bob that one.
Charlie.
The boss. Oh, that, that's... The boss.
No one's called us that since.
No, that's, can't teach an old dog new tricks. Yeah, he's a nice kid. Okay. Okay, next...
Polling that, right? The Shins Day Job Lot?
Okay, let me see. Okay.
Another donation.
Accepting a donation to the Sturbridge Police Department in the amount of $250 to be placed in the police youth account from the Federated Church of Sturbridge and Fiscal. Somebody want to make a motion on that donation?
I will make a motion to approve the donation of $250 with thanks from the Federated Church to the Sturbridge Police Department.
Is there a second?
I will second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Sure, you would have done this, but Bob, we usually have a letter that we thank when donations are given to different departments in the town from us. We usually send a thank you note.
Oh, sure. Yep, I'll do that with recreation also.
Yeah, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Okay, next, action on a transient vendor license for David Brockman at the Sturbridge Host Hotel. Okay, anyone have any questions on the application? There's 90 vendors. Everything seems to be in order. Somebody want to make a motion then to approve the transient vendor license? Oh, I skipped one.
Yeah, so...
That's okay. We're versatile. We can jump back.
I'll make a motion to approve the transient vendor license for David Brockman at the Sturbridge Host Hotel.
Okay, is there a second?
I will second that.
Discussion. All in favor? Okay, now, the appointment of Susan Waters as the planning board designee to the Betterment Committee. Any questions on that? Okay, somebody want to make a motion then to approve that appointment?
Sure, I will move to approve Susan Waters as the planning board designee to the Betterment Committee.
I'll second that.
Discussion. All in favor? Aye. Senior Center Building Committee Confirmation.
Wait, did we do the Brent Pearl, Hocker, and Peddler?
No, we got to do E and F, I believe.
Well, E they polled.
They polled.
So it's just F.
F, I already crossed it off. Okay. Action on a Hocker and Peddler license for Brent Pearl. Any questions on that?
Yeah.
No, it's...
Normally, and he was, I sent him an email too.
Yeah, because we usually have it for this so that we can explain that the hours and the masks. So please reiterate and ask him if he would come in for the approval. Maybe. Okay, now, Bob, aye.
Well, I am pleased with the response that we got on members, candidates for the building committee. Their credentials are in your packets. I think they all have very good and relevant experience, and I'm happy to make that appointment for confirmation by the board.
Okay, anyone have any questions? Okay, we can do it two ways. You can do each individual or as a group.
I think I'm fine with a five. I'm happy to do a group.
Yeah, you can do a group, that's fine.
Okay, somebody willing to make the motion?
Sure, I will move to appoint the following five individuals to the Senior Center Building Committee, Charles Blanchard, Mike Walker, Alan Steinberg, Liam Chamberlain, and Rebecca Mimo.
Is there a second?
I have a second, ma'am.
Discussion. All in favor?
Thank you.
Okay, reappointment for Cheryl Woodcreden to the Board of Registars, and this is strictly a Board of Selectmen appointment, did not have to go through the TA. We were trying to get all the appointments at the same time, beginning with new fiscal year. So we'll have to straighten this one out, and I'm not sure if they have all the positions they need on that. But we can go ahead with this one and straighten it out later, because the town clerk's an automatic position on it, and then they need one from each political party. Okay, somebody willing to make a motion then?
I'll make a motion to reappoint Cheryl Woodcreden to the Board of Registars for a term to expire on March 31st, 2025.
Is there a second?
I will second.
Discussion. All in favor? Okay, the appointment of Gil Joseph Provo as the part-time plumbing and gas inspector. Okay, Bob, do you want to explain this one?
Um, did you want to do J? Or do you want to get to that one?
Oh, I even cleaned my glasses. No, let's do J. Get it out of the way.
On this one, we had five come forward. Per the charter, the town administrator is part of this committee, but I think we have an excellent committee. My hope is that we can move this process along. The goal is to have the candidates for the board to interview at your second meeting in April. And even if the candidate, selected candidate needs to give 30 days' notice, I'm hoping that there would still be some overlap with the present DPW director. And, you know, that's the rough timeframe. Keep this process moving along as well.
Okay, and the names are Robert Reed interim, as he says, by charter. It needs to be Butch Jackson, Charles Blanchard, Brian Isol, and Gary Kelleher. Okay, any questions from the board? Someone want to make a motion then?
I'll make a motion to appoint the following members to the DPW Director Search Committee: Robert Reed, Butch Jackson, Charlie Blanchard, Brian Isol, and Gary Kelleher.
Is there a second?
I will second.
Discussion. All in favor? Okay.
Thank you.
Now, aye.
The building inspector and I did interviews last week. Because, as you may know, Mr. Provost presently is filling in as the plumbing and gas inspector. I had not met him before, but he's, in my mind, eminently qualified, and in my understanding, he's doing a fine job. Very impressed with Mr. Murray also, and he has agreed to be the alternate or backup part-time plumbing and gas inspector, which I understand we need. So in my opinion, these are two very good candidates that will serve the town well. Very, very qualified.
Okay, questions from the board? Okay, somebody want to make a motion on Mr. Provo?
Sure, I will move to appoint Gil Joseph Provost as the part-time plumbing and gas inspector.
Discussion. All in favor?
What's the rate of compensation on it?
I think it's by inspection.
By inspection.
Okay, appointment of John Murray as the backup part-time plumbing and gas inspector?
I'll make a motion to approve the appointment of John Murray as the backup part-time plumbing and gas inspector.
I'll second it.
Oh, sorry.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Oh, thank you very much.
Okay, next, we have old business. Jamie?
No old business.
Mary?
Not old.
No, no.
No, I know, I mean, you have new.
Well, nothing huge, no, but nothing old.
Okay, Chase?
I just wanted to give an update on the search committee. I just wanted to give an update on the search committee, what's going on there. So, we, the job was posted on March 2, and we are deadlining applications on March 25. And then we are going to interview on April 8 and the 11th. So, we should have a name to you, hopefully, middle of April.
Very ambitious.
Top notch.
We've been meeting pretty long and heavy hours, and we've been pushing it pretty good, so.
It's been a tough time for all communities, searching. Okay.
Did you get a lot, Bob, are you done, talking that? Oh, you're not, yeah, okay. Got it.
Okay, I have no old, okay, new business, Jamie?
No.
Mary?
I just had a thought, I know we've redistricted, we have undergone redistricting in Massachusetts, and so now Senator Gobie is no longer our senator. And I was just wondering if, you know, in the past, we've invited Todd and Herb to just give us an update of what's going on in the, you know, State House, I was going to say on Capitol Hill, but not Capitol Hill, no. And I didn't know if we wanted to invite, you know, Senator Fatman here, he now represents Sturbridge.
Well, when does he take over, I didn't think it was.
Well, he's taking over soon, right, or?
Bob, do you know when the new, uh?
I don't.
I thought it already happened, no?
No, it was.
Oh, okay.
I'm not, I know it was redistrict November 8, and then, I don't know if he took it January 1, or if it's.
Yeah, I don't, I know it was not immediate, so why don't we check into that, and we can certainly do that.
We haven't, we haven't been contacted about any change yet, so.
Okay, I didn't realize that, so now you think it's still.
I don't know, it might have happened, we haven't gotten any official.
When it does happen, because it is going to, I thought it would be good to have him come in and let us know what's going on and what he will do for Sturbridge.
Yes, sure he'd be more than happy to. As a matter of fact, I'm sure he'll send a letter, introduction. Okay, do you have any other new?
No.
Okay, I just, we need to vote to approve and sign the election warrant. Is there a motion to do so, please?
Yeah, I will move to, we just, we just.
We signed it.
Yeah, we just signed it. I will vote, I will move to a vote to approve the election warrant.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, discussion, all in favor?
Now, I, can I, can I sign up for my upper reelection? What are we signing right now?
It's for the posting for them, yeah, there's no conflict.
Yeah, there's no conflict.
You're not getting paid, are you?
Not when I last checked to buy a pay account.
I know.
Donations are welcome.
Also, Bob sent out, sent out the report on the LED streetlight conversion. Now, do you want to give a presentation at some meeting, or do you want us to just read it over and?
Yeah, it's for you to read now, there aren't any time pressures. I understood that the town was interested in looking at this before, but I think at that point, the conversion was going to be done by the electric company, and there were some concerns about that, but I had worked with this firm in another town. I forwarded that report to DPW and the Police and Fire Chiefs for them to look at it as well, particularly due to safety concerns, I think that some of the lighting can be tailored to, you know, dangerous intersections or areas that public safety have a concern with. So, there's no rush on that, but just for the board's information, and perhaps at some point, may ask him to come in and do a presentation for the board. But, you know, the financing has worked out, I think the note, the borrowing can be handled by the savings, and then, and then the savings will be free and clear.
Okay, thank you. Mary?
Are you done with that?
Yes.
Okay, I did look it up, and you're correct, Mary. It went into effect November 22, as Chase indicated, and these districts will go into effect for the 2022 elections, so, in the next couple of months.
Yeah, because November is the elections.
The election is in November, and then.
Oh, okay, I'm thinking of our April one, so.
So it'll be January of 2022.
It's a while, we don't have to invite him yet. I didn't realize that, I thought it was taking effect in the new.
Oh, nothing ever moves that quickly, Mary. Okay, next, correspondence. We have a letter from Mass DOT. It says, "We are pleased to inform you that we anticipate Chapter 90 local transportation aid funding for fiscal year 2023 will total $200 million statewide pending final legislative, legislative approval." This letter certifies that pending final passage of the bond authorization, your community's Chapter 90 apportionment for fiscal year 2023 is $426,262. This apportionment will automatically be incorporated into your existing 10-year Chapter 90 contract and will also be listed on the Mass dot website. And it just goes on to say, "The Chapter 90 program is an integral part of maintaining and enhancing your community's infrastructure and is an essential component of our state-local partnership. We look forward to working with you in the coming year to continue the success of this program. Thank you all, thank you for all that you do to make the Commonwealth of Massachusetts a great place to live, work, and raise a family. Sincerely, Charles Baker, Governor Karen Polito, Lieutenant Governor." Does anyone else have any correspondence?
I just wanted to comment on this. Certainly wanted to make the board aware of this, our Chapter 90 allotment, but also, it's my understanding that the balance that we have in Chapter 90, a fair amount of money, has been sort of held in reserve due to the Shampo Bridge project, and I also understand that now we have funding for that, so that some of that Chapter 90 money can be released. So, I've been talking about this with Barbara, our finance director, so we may see, or our recommendation may be, kind of less money by the town to go into roads, et cetera, and using more Chapter 90 money.
Okay, questions or comments for Bob?
I mean, that's been the bridge that's been in the worst shape, and that's why they were starting with that one.
Right.
We have a few that are still passing, but they're going to be in need of repair.
Yeah, and that one, the state allocated money for it, it's got to be five years ago, at least, but never released it, so.
Now, how much did our Chapter 90 go up this month, this year, do we know?
I was afraid you were going to ask that.
It looked like a good amount, it looked like it would, I don't remember it being this much in fiscal year 22.
I'll get that number for you.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just curious.
Okay.
Okay, next, we have approval of minutes, we have the minutes of January 18. Anyone have any corrections, additions? Okay, is there a motion then to approve as written?
I will move to approve that January 18, 2022, minutes as written.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion, all in favor? Okay, next, we have Citizens Forum. Good. At least you're smiling, because the meeting got over quick, look at that.
I do have a question on the process that was.
Well, can you come up to the mic, please? It's for the people at home. We can hear. And I may be old, I may be old-fashioned, but could you?
Yes, I'll say my name.
No, take your hat off, you have to take your, say your name too, for the record.
Josh Cottone, One Cedar Pond Road, Sturbridge. I was just curious on the process that was taken to elect our, the, the committee that was chosen for the senior center. I didn't know of the process, because I was asked possibly be on that committee, and then I never heard anything about it. I just, it went really quick. I was more concerned, because I was putting myself into the recreation, I'm putting, I'm going for, running for Recreation Department, and I got tangled up between that and hearing about this committee, and I didn't know what the process was, I didn't know, building inspector, I had a conversation with him about maybe possibly doing, helping out with that, and then I never heard anything else about it, but I didn't know how the process was, how we got to the people that you chose, that's.
Oh, okay, Mr. Reed can explain it, but it was posted in the newspaper, it was posted on the website, and there was a timeline to get letters of interest in. So, I think you missed the letter of interest.
That's what probably happened, because I was, I was getting my signatures for votes, and I was doing that stuff first, I was trying to do that before I went away on vacation, probably. I didn't know what the process.
Yeah, that's how it, and Mr. Reed went through the applicants we did get and made a decision based on their qualifications, and then he brought them forward to us.
Yeah, I think.
Anytime there's an opening, we, we post it on the website for sure.
Well, you're a bit.
And I, I think I just, like I said, I had, I was looking for, I, I was looking towards the rec department or was looking towards something, and I kind of, I must have overlooked that completely, but then I had a, just a conversation with Nelson about it, and then my opportunity was lost because I was already committed to something.
Yeah.
I still would, if there was some other opportunity that they needed over there, I would definitely.
Didn't intend to leave you hanging, but normally, we would not, you know, get back in touch with the applicants until an action was taken by the board, and then let people know what their status was.
Okay, thank you.
Good luck, Dave.
Thank you.
Anyone else? No? Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
Could I just?
Oh, Bob.
Two things. One is, I met with the Charter Committee last week, and I had emailed the board about working on a capital bylaw. So, I'll, for the next meeting, I want to have a draft of the annual town meeting warrant, I'll get that to you well before the meeting, but I have just a few recommendations on some additional procedures or policies, and I explained, I don't, you know, we can't really find the, the type of policy or capital bylaw that you would see in most communities as far as the appointment of the committee and the procedures, et cetera. So, I just want to mention, I think that would be something that I would look for the board to consider as a bylaw to put on the town meeting warrant. And also, I had emailed the, the board, I think with everything that's going on, the capital process, I know Barbara's been involved in the Town Administrator Search Committee and a bundle of other things, and now we've had the town accountant resign, which, you know, she's trying desperately to fill, and it's not just her, but myself, and we were wondering about whether the board would be amenable to move the Saturday budget meeting that's scheduled for this month back a week or two, or even considering having it done one evening rather than a Saturday, just to give us a bit more time in putting things together. I know there's a budget book that has to be produced, like I said, I want to get the annual town meeting warrant draft to you as well as begin some preliminary budget discussions. But with everything going on, I would just ask the board to consider giving us a little more time.
Thoughts?
Very reasonable.
Right.
I mean, I don't know, when, when was it scheduled for? I think meeting at night is fine, I mean, I don't think anybody will have to get that.
I do better at night than the morning.
Yeah, the Saturday, I don't think you're going to get anybody to.
As everybody knows.
I mean, I don't know if I'll still be in the seat when you have it, but like, if I am, I, I like nights rather than Saturdays.
Yeah, and I believe Barbara's also spoken with the Chair of the Finance Committee and broached the subject with him as well.
Yeah, there's more of them, so that seems to be more complicated than this.
Right.
So, something, something to consider. If you're, if you're amenable to that, then we'll, we'll come up with a recommendation for perhaps an evening meeting someday, maybe a Tuesday, that's a long day.
I was just going to say, Tuesday would be nice, Barbara's here till 7 anyways, and, you know, our evening, we could even start 5, 5:30, you know, depending on FinCom.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
I think that's all I have.
Okay, I didn't mean to slight you. Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
I second that motion to adjourn.
Discussion, all in favor? Forty-five minutes.